Just for you and some other students if you can hang out here.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome back. Glad to see everybody stuck to this place after so much full house. We'll try and entertain you as well at the regular meeting we did retreat this afternoon. Vanessa.
Here.
Here. Thank you. I'd like to hear a motion to approve our agenda. To call in favor of approval of the agenda, please say aye. Aye. Next, we have approval of the minutes, please. Tab A in the packet tonight, the recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the minutes of the February 22, 2022 special and monthly meeting as submitted. Do I hear a motion for the approval? And support?
Support.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are any opposed? Those minutes stand approved. Thank you. Next, the citizen participation. We're looking to miss Kissel for a WCC Education Association remarks. Good evening.
Hello. It is March 2022. The past four weeks have been some of the most stressful of the year. If you recall, just four weeks ago, I reported that there had been some sudden schedule changes that were being undertaken by the administration without collaboration with faculty. These changes primarily impacted the general education courses, but this also meant that the ripple effect of such changes were enormous. Starting on February 22, when this first came to my attention, I began conversations with President Blanca. As the closing and shifting of courses over the last four weeks have happened, it has changed schedules with faculty, full, adjunct, and part-time, which also means students who planned, scheduled, and advisors are on their own prior to February 22, they too had changes to make. So let me today provide you some general information about the situation as it stands. Each summer, a list of due dates for scheduled work is issued to faculty and staff. In fact, this academic year, we began working on the summer and fall 22 schedules in November of 2021. At this time, the departments and the chairs work with the deans to adjust the schedules for times, classroom space, modality, and student leave. This happened throughout December and into January, when full-time faculty had to turn in choices for their schedules. January was also when chairs began the arduous process of offering and filling the remaining classes with adjuncts and part-timers, hoping that instructor names are listed at the time of registration. By February 14, our book orders were also due. On February 16, the schedules were made, so available students and advising was well underway. Understanding the months of hard work that had already gone into the schedules and the continuous changes that the chairs had made in conjunction with their deans to predict the needs as the pandemic shifted, it should not come as any surprise that the changes that began on February 22 created a stress and frustration I've not seen in years. So where are we now? After many emails, phone calls, and meetings between and among administration and faculty, much of the original schedule for spring-summer has been restored with the addition of face-to-face classes. But this has not been without a great deal of unneeded pressure and time. I'm actually still in the process of determining the impact on fall term, as there are still changes occurring. Further, for some of the courses that changed modality or had a change to the CRN number connected to the course, the book orders did not follow. Thus, chairs had to re-enter information or shift book selections to the course if it was now taught by a different instructor. In some cases, departments found themselves opening and closing sections based on an arbitrary percentage of online to virtual, face-to-face, even when historically, pre-COVID, these percentages did not match the student demand. One department chair shared that they started the schedule process for summer for the fifth time since November, twice for full-time faculty, then twice for adjunct faculty, and just now for the part-timers. What has been frustrating that is that despite the requirement of the Board of Trustees' policy 1585 to engage in shared governance, many in the administration have been unwilling to provide a satisfactory explanation for the recent changes to the schedule and have been reluctant to answer questions from the faculty about the legitimacy of the alterations. This lack of real voice in the decision-making process has left many faculty angry, frustrated, and ultimately demoralized. And this feeling of helplessness continues to add to the already stressful environment we've been working under for years. So the bottom line is that faculty and staff are always ready to discuss changes and understand often better the consequences of those changes. Our institution is so very complex, and the decisions and the changes are best made when we all have a voice. Moreover, we have been able to accomplish so much over the last two years through regular, honest conversations, and President Blanca and I discussed this at length last week. As I shared with her, it is the expectation of the WCCA that we be included in these important decisions that impact our enrollment, staffing, and advising. So of course, this is not the only issue taking our time. I had a chance to review the load reports for full-time faculty, and I wanted to share that within our bargaining unit, there are 186 full-time faculty, advisors, counselors, librarians, and lab technicians. Roughly this semester, at least 70% of them are on campus regularly, with many having been on campus since the pandemic began. This is important to the unit, since there have been some comments or misconceptions that faculty at large are not on campus. Every week, I see more and more of my colleagues, but I'm also so proud that as a college, we made decisions to protect each other throughout this pandemic while reinventing ourselves over and over to meet the changing needs of this institution. And this is a trend that will likely continue. Also, we are proudly adding new adjuncts to Fall 2022 from our waitlist, which has been frozen since the start of the pandemic. And additionally, we're ready for negotiations at this time and appreciate the efforts by my team so far. We do have one grievance that is working its way through the system, and this week, the WCC EA board, we will be discussing any chance that this might result in arbitration. But as always, the WCC EA will remain open to discussions to solve the issues at hand and create the sustainable practices. So as I normally finish my remarks with something reflective or motivational, I don't want to disappoint the membership who gets a copy of these notes each month. This week, I will welcome the 2022-2023 WCC EA board to its first meeting. While many of the faces are familiar, there are new representatives from across the college, and this is truly exciting. The work that we do for one another and for this institution is remarkable. The WCC EA representatives take seriously the work that needs to be done to support one another and our students during this unprecedented time. Now, I'm in my 18th year at WCC, 25 years total in the classroom, but I know that those coming after me are ready and prepared to take on the challenges that we will face in the years to come. They understand the strength and solidarity and the benefits of being active stakeholders in their collective futures. So Robert Greenleaf, who coined servant leadership, has always been kind of best described by approach to leadership, but his definition of institutional servant leadership fits so well with the work of the WCC EA and this institution. Greenleaf said, "Caring for persons, the more able and the less able, serving each other, is the rock upon which a good society is built." Whereas until recently, caring was largely person-to-person, now most of it is mediated through institutions, often large, complex, powerful, impersonal, not always competent, sometimes corrupt. If a better society is to be built, one that is more just and more loving, one that provides greater creative opportunity for its people, then the most open course is to raise both the capacity to serve and the very performance as servant of an existing major institution by new regenerative forces operating within them. So indeed, we can all be a force for good, and I know those representing the WCC EA are ready. Thank you.
Thank you. Other citizen participation, is there anybody from the public here this evening that wishes to speak? If so, please come forward. Seeing none, we did have a couple of written communications, Vanessa, which you distributed to all of the trustees. And that concludes our citizen participation piece. Special reports, I want to turn to Mr. Peter Luskovich and the 2022 Michigan Phi Theta Kappa All Academic Team. Peter, tell us who these people are, would you please?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Peter Luskovich, Director of Student Development Activities, and I am joined today with Coordinator of Student Organizations Veronica Caprero, along with Matt Lucas, and two student members of Phi Theta Kappa Honor Society. I'm actually going to hand it off to Veronica tonight to present on the Phi Theta Kappa accomplishments and introduce our scholarship winners.
Hi, everyone. Thank you. So on March 7, I had the honor to go to the Michigan All Academic Team Luncheon through Phi Theta Kappa, and we had the wonderful honor to be awarded two Coca-Cola Foundation Scholarship winners. We have Rachel Rubenguca. Here she won gold. If you'd like to stand, you're more than welcome. And then we have Daria Skolitsky. Here, she won silver. It's a great honor for our college, and I'm so proud to say that these two students are making PDK's chapter of WCC incredibly proud. And now off to Matt Lucas to talk about WCC eSports fundraiser.
We do have some awards.
Yes.
If you don't mind.
We want to make this official.
Yes, please. Right. So Rachel Rubenguca. And next, we have Daria Skolitsky.
The certificate says Washington Community College in recognition of superior academic achievement, leadership, and engagement in college and community service.
And now we have Daria Skolitsky. Thank you very much. And Matt?
I'm Matt Lucas. I'm our Manager of Sports here. Thank you, everyone, this evening. What we did in October, for those that may know, we ran our WCC eSports Stream for Mott Week, and some of the things we did in that was a week-long Rocket League tournament. We had students and community members involved with streaming to build awareness about the therapeutic gaming division that Mott Children's Hospital has, and we were able to raise over $10,000 for those efforts. And the gaming carts, which part of the money proceeds went to, came in this week. So as you see on the screen here, is some of the carts that the students or the children in the hospital will be able to use when they're there to give them a little more normalcy. Obviously, they're dealing with things that none of us really want to deal with, right? And that's things that they'll be able to use. So we're appreciative of that.
Thank you, Matt. And congratulations all the way around from the trustees. Thank you for your work. Monthly reports are next on our agenda, and personnel recommendations are in Tab B of the packet tonight. Recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the personnel recommendations as they are submitted. Do I hear a motion? And there's a motion and support. Is there any discussion? Trustee Hatcher?
I just wanted to congratulate very early on, but I do know Saint was a lot senior, and he's saying many times, he was on my tour, and I knew where his office was, and I just want to wish him well after three years of getting faculty into their offices. Those same, okay, maybe the same. And then one, two, three, four, five employment-ending people, same Mr. Taramani, so congratulations to everyone.
Thank you. Any other comments? All in favor of this recommendation, say aye, please.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The recommendation is approved. Thank you. Next, we have financial reports for February 2022. Before we vote on the financial reports, VP Barnes, can you give us some highlights on what we're looking at, please?
I would just say that this report is very, very similar to the prior month. There's really little to report in terms of major variances. We're right on pace. In fact, as part of the board retreat, you just saw where we're expecting to land for the fiscal year '22. So if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer, but generally speaking, it's very similar.
Any questions from any trustees? If not, the recommendation is, I'm sorry, trustee Hatcher, go ahead.
In the expenditures, where can I find IT and public safety? Or is it buried somewhere?
Public safety, I believe, is in the Student Services line. And IT, I'll have to double-check which line. I think it's in General Administration, but I'll double-check that for you.
There's also the supplies.
Oh, sorry.
Is it possible that some of the, we give an I advise report of IT, of their revenues and expenditures for the last two years?
Well, that won't have any revenue.
The IT expenditures for the last two years?
Yeah. I'd like to see what's going on.
Will see the year. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees receive the financial reports for February 2022 as follows. General Fund, Deferred Maintenance Fund, Capital Fund, and Combined Schedule of Investments, all funds. Do I hear a motion?
I move we accept and receive the financial reports.
And is there support? Support from trustee Lando? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The reports are accepted. Thank you, VP Barnes. Facilities Development Report, VP Beschi. Tell us how the Morris Lawrence Building is coming along.
Gladly.
Good evening. First up, I have a report, an update on the two capital projects that we have going on. Number one, or the first one up, is the Morris Lawrence renovation. Finish work, tiles going on in the bathrooms, on the floor, on the walls, so we're moving into actually some of the finish work. A lot of work is being done right now in the electrical, so you'll see, this is the new switchgear that's placed in the mechanical penthouse, and hopefully, with a little bit of luck, by the end of next week, the power, house power will be restored, will be off emergency power and operating on the house power. So a lot of work done in the electrical. This is a photo of the mechanical air handler up in the penthouse, so again, a lot of work being done right now with mechanical and electrical work. This is a photo just showing some ductwork insulation in the corridors up the ceiling. Most of the ceiling work is complete. Earlier this week, a lot of the AV cable showed up, and actually, there's now a lot of cable lane being installed in the hallways and closets as well. And then finally, just an aerial view of the entrance. It's about 100% framed and just waiting for skylights, metal panels, and roofing materials. So overall, ML renovation is on schedule. Most of the major long lead items are procured and onsite and tracking right on schedule.
I see that's a drone shot that you're showing us here.
Yes, it is.
Not a tall ladder.
Next, the other major capital project we have going on is the Great Lakes Regional Training Center expansion. Next month, I'll have some photos to show an update on that, but in general, that project is coming along very well as well. Early March, most of the concrete footings were poured, and middle of March, all of the structural steel was up, so you'll really start to see the framework of the expansion or the addition coming out of the ground. This week and next, they're going to start putting the block, cement blocks, walls on the exterior, and then follow behind with the pre-cast concrete flooring deck. So probably by early to mid-April, the structure will be enclosed and ready for a lot of the finish work to be done for the labs and the classroom. So those are the highlights on the two capital projects. Included in the report is an update on deferred maintenance. There's currently about 19 deferred maintenance projects going on. I'll just highlight a few. Campus-wide lighting upgrade is ongoing. It's in support of our 2% electrical reduction. Now that the weather's nice, we'll probably start to do the campus-wide roof fall protection. All that material for railing and fall protection is in place, and now that the weather's nice, we're going to begin working on that. Parking structure UPS installation. Two of the contracts, if you look down at the bottom, the construction contracts issued in the last 30 days, two of them pertain to the parking structure UPS, so that work will begin to get the UPS and the power, emergency power set up for the parking structure and public safety. Campus surface drive replacement, there'll be a funding discussion later tonight, talk about replacing the service drive on the west end of campus. WTMC schematic design, we're buttoning up the proposal for that design work and want to consider looking at new space for WTMC. And as I mentioned, in the last 30 days, we issued four contracts in excess of $20,000. At this point, I'll turn it over to questions. Any questions?
Trustee Hatcher?
How, how am I supposed to, page five, deferment, a yellow paper? Some things are in process on the white paper, a couple of things, am I supposed to be there? Or is it just?
So the facilities development report is really reporting on the progress of the construction, deferred maintenance projects, and in the finance report, they really talk about closing out the actual, when the project's finished and completed and closed out, then on the financial report, the numbers show the actual cost. So, you know.
It's not apples and oranges. One's done from an accounting point of view, one's done from a managerial project point of view, but we are working, based on your comments last month, we are working to, as much to the extent possible, combine this into a single report so that it's not so difficult to follow.
Another suggestion for that would be to put the lighting things together, moving things together, which is very similar.
Grouped in buckets or different, in similar trades? Good comment.
The other question I had was, if you did the, one thing, did you say, board, the ML, is that in progress?
Yes, it is.
So that was done?
Correct.
Other comments? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Remarks of members of the Board of Trustees, and I think trustee DeVarty has some comments for us this evening.
I have the good fortune to serve on this board with my esteemed colleagues, and I'd like to invite you, all of you, and members of the audience out here to attend the 60th Annual Ann Arbor Film Festival, which is opening tonight at the Michigan Theater. Two years ago, the pandemic hit us, and in, within one week, we went from an all-live, in-person event to an all-online distance event, and executed it and became a model for other film festivals around the world. This year, for the first time, two years later, we're back in the theater, but we're also online. We're now a hybrid film festival. So people will be watching it from around the world, as they have for the last two years. All the films and competition, there are numerous programs, some of them are special programs, and many of them are films and competition that both faculty and students at WCC have competed in throughout the years and sometimes won prizes. So I would encourage any of you, I've left people with a couple passes, to come to a program, vouchers to come to an in-person program. It's at the Michigan Theater, and the Michigan Theater, at this time, still requires proof of vaccination to attend events there, and they ask that people wear masks when they're not consuming concessions. So, and it is a large, the Michigan Theater main auditorium seats 1,800 people, so it is a large venue with improved ventilation since the pandemic happened.
Built in 1928.
Okay. The venue is historic, the festival is historic, and we're celebrating our 60th year. There are a number of special programs. I won't go into all of them or any of them, because I could go on for a long time, but I invite everybody to come, and it's one of my other board functions that I'm very proud to be able to do, as I am to serve on this board. Thank you.
Tonight is the opening reception of the film festival. Trustee DeVarty is foregoing that so that he can be at the table with us here tonight.
Oh, thank you.
And Ann Arbor Distilling Company makes a special cocktail for the opening night that I will not be able to, on trial. That's okay.
I know that's a hard act to follow, but do any other trustees have comments? Trustee McKnight-Morton?
I just want to say two things. The first, I'd like to say that I appreciate all the help and the work that went into for, SimCOG has, had been asking for some, some input into a report on broadband in southeastern Michigan, and Michelle Mueller, she was a part of that, and also was Brandon Tucker, and I just appreciate. And within one week, we went from an all live, in-person event to an all online distance event and executed it and became a model for other film festivals around the world. This year, for the first time, two years later, we're back in the theater, but we're also online. We're now a hybrid film festival. So people will be watching it from around the world, as they have for the last two years. All the films in competition, there are numerous programs. Some of them are special programs and many of them are films in competition that both faculty and students at WCC have competed in throughout the years and sometimes won prizes. So I would encourage any of you, left people with a couple passes, to come to a program, vouchers to come to an in-person program. It's at the Michigan Theater. And the Michigan Theater, at this time, still requires proof of vaccination to attend events there. And they ask that people wear masks when they're not consuming concessions. So, and it is a large, the Michigan Theater main auditorium seats 1,800 people. So it is a large venue with improved ventilation since the pandemic happened.
Built in 1928.
Okay. The venue is historic, the festival is historic, and we're celebrating our 60th year. There are a number of special programs. I won't go into all of them or any of them because I could go on for a long time. But I invite everybody to come. And it's one of my other board functions that I'm very proud to be able to do, as I am to serve on this board. Thank you.
Tonight is the opening reception of the film festival. Trustee DeVarty is foregoing that so that he can be at the table with us here tonight.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, it is. And Ann Arbor Distilling Company makes a special cocktail for the opening night that I will not be able to. That's okay.
I know that's a hard act to follow, but do any other trustees have comments? Trustee McKnight Morton?
I just want to say two things. The first, I'd like to say that I appreciate all the help and the work that went into for, SimCOG has, had been asking for some input into a report on broadband in southeastern Michigan. And Michelle Mueller, she was a part of that and also was Brandon Tucker. And I just appreciate it. The report turned out just awesome. It was other people from different areas throughout southeastern Michigan. But those two were part of this report and it was very awesome. And plus, it's going to be utilized. And parts of it, it will be used in southeast, not southeast, but south side of Ypsilanti because they're having issues with broadband and also in rural areas. Mylan in parts of Chelsea, parts of Celine, you know. So that's going to be naturally in Ypsilanti too. But this is going to be a really big issue now coming out. And also, I'm going to say something that I hope I don't embarrass this person. But our meetings for SimCOG has been in downtown Detroit, well, not downtown, maybe a few miles away from downtown, at this facility. And I didn't notice it the first time I went. And the second time I went this month, first part of the month, I noticed it. And what I noticed was that there is a park across the street from this facility. And it is called G. Menon Milliken.
You're getting close.
Milliken Marina Park.
William G. Milliken State Park and Marina is what the state of Michigan is.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'll work with you anytime.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. But, you know, I bring this up because it is beautiful. Detroit has done a wonderful job with this Marina Park. I remember when I first started going down there in January, it was kind of like they were working in the cold and doing all kinds of stuff. Now it's springtime and you can really see the benefit of the hard work. And this Marina Park is just gorgeous. So if you ever have a chance to go down there, that'd be great.
It was part of the reclamation of the Detroit River by the state. And Jennifer Granholm cut the ribbon on it about six or seven years ago. But it is, it is an asset to the waterfront.
It certainly is. And the waterfront is really coming along. So if you really get a chance to go down there, it's just becoming an awesome sight to see and be a part of. Thank you.
Any other comments by trustees? President Belenka?
Oh, yes.
President's remarks, please.
Thank you. Yes, I'd love to. First of all, I'd like to thank the PTK students again and PTK members for all the work that they did and our amazing esports team. So thank you. Student Services is, the Student Services area is one that is like the wind beneath our wings. They're seldom recognized because we talk about everything but what they do. And they are the ones that really, they're the glue that keeps us together. So I'd like to thank the Student Services team. And Linda, thank you for your leadership and thank you. Also, I have a lot of kudos to give tonight. First, to Vice Chair Davis, who attended our first HBCU pathway program event that was designed to engage our current students. The event included a screening of the movie We Are Rising about the history and purpose of HBCUs. And we're glad that you could join us and join the students as we encourage them to continue and transfer to an HBCU. So thank you, Trustee Davis. Also, congratulations and thanks to Trustee Diana McKnight Morton, who's been tireless in her work, again, as you know, SimCOG, she talks about it every month. In a good way, okay? In representing WCC and helping ways to improve education, not only for us, but for the entire state and the region. And most recently, she, along with Vice President Michelle Mueller, served on SimCOG's broadband action team, studying gaps and opportunities relating to improving the strengths and access to broadband in this region is so critical to infrastructure. And the report she was referring to is called Broadband in Southeast Michigan: Expansion, Engagement, and Equity. So thank you so much to both of you. And finally, and I think I have a picture for this. On March 2nd, Vanessa Brooks and I were fortunate enough to attend the annual fundraiser benefit from the Ann Arbor Film Festival, which we all know, these guys all stole, they stole my thunder tonight, which we all know is among the most highly regarded festivals in the country. And this, as you know, it starts today. And it's celebrating its 60th anniversary. But what you may not know is that the family of Treasurer DeVarty has supported the Ann Arbor Film Festival from the very beginning and every year since in the event's history. And the festival was awarded the Pre-DeVarty Award. Is that right? For the funniest film? Am I saying it right?
My mother wanted to create an award for the funniest film at the festival. So my mom and dad, or we created it after my mom and dad passed away. We, the first fully endowed award that the festival offers. And it offers numerous awards. And several of them are fully endowed at this time. And those of you that work in foundations out there in the audience can really appreciate how hard it is to get a lot of these things fully endowed. And that was the first one.
Yes, thank you. This was in memory of Dominic and Alice DeVarty and recognizes the long relationship between Dominix, the restaurant they founded, and the festival. So we were both honored to be present at this. And Treasurer DeVarty gave a wonderful speech when he received the award. So thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That concludes your remarks.
That concludes my remarks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Going back to some old business next. Tab E, excuse me, Tab E in the packet tonight, single-mode fiber installation. And CIO Kruger, is there anything that you would like us to know about this as we begin to discuss it? Or do you think we're good to go?
So I'm happy to answer any questions that we may have. I think I've done over this before, so obviously this is something badly needed to tie everything together.
Well, let me read the recommendation and we'll see if any questions follow. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve a contract for single-mode fiber installation from Challenger Technologies for an amount not to exceed $166,936. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
And we have a motion and support. Is there any discussion or are there any questions? We have a question, Diana?
Yeah, I think this has come up before, but are we going to be, are you going to be asking for some money again?
Yes, yes.
That's what's in this recommendation.
I mean, besides this recommendation, additional money?
Probably, yes.
So this is, this is phase two. So this is the second half of the single-mode fiber installation. However, there will always be, there will always be other ads that come up that we need, if people are running video cameras, other needs, there's going to be other needs. But this basically is here for the second half of the video.
Sure, okay. So this is to take care of the major stuff.
Right, right, right. But there was always going to be new things. For instance, I can't tell anyone, Great Lakes Building, sorry, wasn't scheduled. We can't have network there. I mean, obviously, we can't.
Right, right, okay.
We good?
I asked it.
I believe we are. Any further questions? We have a recommendation in front of us. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Roll call.
Roll call, yes, roll call.
Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Treasurer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Landau? Trustee McKnight Morton?
Recommendation is approved.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
Yeah, oh, yes.
Next, we have network infrastructure upgrade. Pay attention to this thing. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve a contract to purchase network infrastructure equipment from CDW in an amount not to exceed $1,793,464. Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
And support? We have both. Any further discussion? Please call the roll, Vanessa.
Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Treasurer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Landau? Trustee McKnight Morton?
Yes.
Recommendation is approved. Thank you. Tab G, Examity, Learning, Validation, and Remote Proctoring Contract. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the continuation of examity at an annual cost not to exceed $125,000 even for the 2021-2022 academic year. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
And there's support? Is there any discussion? VP Hearns, anything you care to add to this? Are you happy? Okay. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Treasurer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Landau?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
Yes.
Recommendation is approved. Thank you. Tab H in our packet, the appointment of the 2022 Board Negotiating Team for the WCC Education Association Full-Time Teaching Faculty Union Contract. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the following resolution. Whereas on March 22nd, 2022, the Board of Trustees of Ossinaw Community College appoints its negotiations team to negotiate with the Ossinaw Community College Education Association affiliated with MEA/NEA. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of Ossinaw Community College appoints as its negotiators the following individuals. Ted Swike, Kimberly Hearns, Linda Blakey, Eva Samolsky, Brandon Tucker, Victor Vega, and a labor and employee relations analyst to be determined. Be it further resolved that these individuals will be given the necessary power to make proposals, consider proposals, and make concessions in the course of negotiating or bargaining, subject to the final approval of the Board of Trustees. Do I hear a motion? So moved. I have a motion and I have support. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Treasurer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Landau?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
Thank you. The recommendation is approved. Moving to new business for discussion, Tab I in our packet is a resolution to recommend the allowable 2022-23 velorum tax rate. VP Barnes, comments?
Yeah, in layman's terms, we're asking to use the same, the maximum mileage rate, which is 3.3759, for our budget development for fiscal year 2023.
Any questions, Trustee DeVarty?
Yeah, it says if moved to action, a roll call. Well, there's any reason that we need to do this tonight? Our normal course of business would be to do it next month.
I mean, it would be fine. We would be presenting the budget next month. So it would be approved with the budget.
Okay. Fine. Good, all right, thank you. Next, service drive replacement. VP Beschi, anything that you care to share with us in this regard?
Yes, there is. So for discussion is, funny request, replace the service drive on the west side of campus. Highlighted in red shows the extent of the drive that would be replaced. It's from the entrance of East Shearong River Drive all the way to parking lot five. Scope of the work is replacing not just the asphalt, but redoing the subbase and then realigning at the south end of the drive, realigning the curve and improving the drainage. The, so the drawing on the top, excuse me, is the existing drive. And again, the scope of the work is to remove all of the asphalt, regrading and curb work as well as re-moving and rebuilding the subbase. And then, as you can see on the far right's end of the, at the, at the right end of the drive is sort of a curve, double curve roadway that we want to realign. The low point in the entire site is right at that first curve. And so by realigning, which is the lower drawing, so we're going to straighten out the curve, help improve the drainage, and also improve some safety. Few photos, this just shows the existing condition. It's deteriorating badly. This service drive is used primarily, well, it's used exclusively for delivery to the, receiving and shipping garage for UPS, FedEx, and mail deliveries. It's also included in the master plan as a west loop of the campus. So this service drive is also the far west loop of the campus drive. And you can see the condition of the asphalt is really beyond any type of crack fill or maintenance work that could bring it back. And that concludes, so the schedule would be starting mid-May and finishing by the first of July if this project were approved. So it is a recommendation of the Board of Trustees to approve the replacement contract with best asphalt in the amount of $368,285.
Was this drive well engineered initially? Or it's just useful life has been spent?
I would, I would say, yes. I mean, it's probably 48, you know, it's original. So it's 48, 50 years old. There is considerable slope to it. So there's, you know, drainage issues at the, at the far south end of the drive that need to be addressed. It's heavily used, it gets a lot of heavy traffic on it. So all those factors contribute to just deterioration of the, of the top course of the concrete, of the asphalt and water penetration into the subbase.
Well, this, this matters before us for discussion tonight. It'll come back next month for approval. Any other comments from anybody?
This will be finished before the ironworkers, right? Don't they come?
Yes, it will. It'll be finished by July 1st.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Signage, there's, there's traffic signage, no speed bumps planned for it.
No speed bump? No.
No, no, currently, the design does not call for. We are going to realign the curve, which really is a safety issue and a drainage issue. So hopefully, by eliminating that double curve, we've taken actions to improve the safety. They do. It connects to lot five, so it is used by more than just service vehicles.
Thank you.
Couple administrators at this table really like that service drive, too. A couple administrators at this table really like that service drive, too.
Next item for discussion that we have is a recommendation for new programs, 2022, 2023. VP Hearns, is there anything that you'd like to tell us?
I would just add that there's four new programs here. They're all certificates. And it kind of lies in some of the conversation we had earlier in regards to people needing to come in, skill up, get back into the workforce. The robotics and the automation specialist advanced certificate are in our advanced manufacturing program. Those will be their first certificates in that program, which we think is a really big deal. And then the introduction of elementary education certificate actually is being presented so that we can better align to the changes that are coming down from the state in regards to certifying teachers and the changes that have to be made at Easter, that transfer, or students who finish credits here and transfer to E&amp;O.
Good, thank you. Any, any questions? Tab L in our packet is an action item, budgeting and forecasting software purchase. Before we vote. and forecasting software purchase. Before we vote on this budget, VP Barnes, anything you'd like to highlight for us?
Yeah, I'll just make a few comments. Hopefully, you had a chance to read through it, but we, right now, when we consolidate our budget, it's a very manually intensive process. It's about 160 Excel spreadsheets that we distribute across the college. We work with people manually to get information in those spreadsheets. We work with individual department heads oftentimes to get information in those spreadsheets, consolidate them, and it's, it's very prone to error. We have to really watch it, and we're managing a pretty large budget here, and we don't want to risk having those kinds of errors. So we're looking for a more robust system, and we think, we reached out, we got six, we did an RFP, a request for proposal, we got six responses, two of which we really liked. We did a deep dive with those two vendors, and the one we settled on was a company called TrueEd, who uses a software called Anaplan, but they work exclusively with higher ed institutions. So they work with community colleges, larger universities, so we will benefit not only from the software, but also from their expertise and their, their knowledge and history and best practices. So hopefully, we can leverage that for, with this software. So, the reason it's coming up for action this month, it has a couple of benefits. One, we, this year, this fiscal year, we're doing pretty well in terms of expenses and revenues, so it would allow us to spend the money this year, at least most of it, on the implementation this year and this fiscal year, and not jeopardize next year's budget. And two, it guarantees that the software will be ready, and everyone will be used to using it by the time we start next year's budget.
Just as an aside, would you hazard a guess on the number of man-hours that you commit to this budgeting process currently?
I, I would guess it's a minimum of 1,500 hours. And that's just, that's just, that doesn't even include my time. That includes the people who are just doing the actual consolidation of all of the numbers, and making sure that there are no errors. Yes. In fact, it should be much more user-friendly. We have a lot of department chairs, for example, that are involved in the budget process, and this will be much more user-friendly, and it will involve a training process as we roll it out, yes.
Any other questions? Trustee DeVarty?
Treasurer DeVarty, excuse me. Normally, I guess this is a question for Larry. Normally, by procedure, we see things for discussion. Do we need a motion to move this to an action item?
No, I mean, no. Policies, we definitely need multiple readings for board bylaws, but these, we don't technically need.
Okay. I'm definitely in support of this, and I just wanted to inquire if we needed a separate motion to vote on it tonight, but I'm in support of it and ready to vote on it tonight.
Sounds like the coast is clear.
Yeah, it does.
The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees, is recommended that the Board of Trustees approve a five-year contract with TrueEd Consulting to implement the Anapian budgeting and forecasting software for an amount not to exceed $349,475. Do I hear a motion?
DeVarty, support.
We have a motion and support. Is there any further discussion? Vanessa, would you please call the roll?
Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Treasurer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Landau?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
Yes.
VP Barnes, you've got it. Thank you. And we've now run out of things to discuss, and.
He can make the party.
Maybe so.
The party's already well underway, that's.
So I need to, I need a motion to adjourn our trustee meeting. And support, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.